Welcome to Meredith Communications Meet Your Candidates Forum with our four city council candidates sitting with us here first off, and then we're going to talk to our four school board candidates running for two seats on the school board of directors. If you're listening on the radio and you would like to watch the live stream, if you're on 95.7 FM, you can go to westerniowatoday.com and on that black tab at the top, go to video and find KS95 and you can watch our Meet Your Candidates Forum here this evening. Again, we're starting off with our four city council candidates, all running unopposed. We have two incumbents, Mr. Dana Halter who's our far left down here. He is running unopposed for the fifth ward on the city council. He is of course, an incumbent, longtime city councilman. To Dana's left is Mr. Rob Claussen, who is our mayoral candidate here for the November election, running unopposed. And Dana Halter, or excuse me, Jeremy Butler, candidate for city at large, currently holding that seat by appointment, but on the ballot here as well for the November election. And Jim Behrens, incumbent city councilman representing the second ward, also running unopposed. Gentlemen, thank you for coming in this evening and getting a chance to get to know you guys a little bit. And we're going to start with Dana Halter. And tell us about yourself.
We came to Atlantic in 93, November 93, when we opened up the new Fairway store and I managed the market there for, I believe it was about 25, 26 years. And after 39 years of working for Fairway, I just needed to have a change in life. And so I retired from Fairway and got kind of tired of helping my wife dust. So I went back out and found another job. And currently I've worked for, which is now Ziegler Companies for six years in the parts department. And I enjoy it immensely. I especially enjoy my Saturdays and Sundays off now. We raised two boys, Chad and Kale, here in Atlantic and they're currently doing well. And we have, believe it or not, five grandkids and two sets of twins.
Wow.
So life is good.
No doubt. Dana, thank you.
I enjoy giving back to Atlantic and trying to do what we can to make it better for everyone.
Mr. Rob Claussen?
Yes, sir.
Tell us about yourself.
My family came to Atlantic a little earlier than that, back around 1970, I believe. Raised here, graduated high school in 1980, class of 80. I have been, well, either employed or self-employed in a community for 40 years. I have a family, I've got a beautiful wife of 44 years. I've got two adult children, one of which now owns a roofing company, I used to. My daughter Crystal and her husband Chris are now operating that. My son Joe is down in St. Louis. He is an engineer for the Bear Corporation. I am currently up to eight grandkids, which I truly believe are the gift you get for keeping your own alive. So that works out well. The reason I'm running is I retired first of the year. Problem with doing nothing is you never quite get done and there's no sense of accomplishment. Much like Dana, I thought, well, I gotta have something to do. I do like to give back to Atlantic. I've spent time on the chamber. I've spent time on the Ann Wickman Board. We, I currently help with the Southwest Iowa fishing team, couple, three other things. But I thought maybe the time was right, toss my hat and ring and see if there's a way I can help.
Rob, thank you very much. Mr. Jeremy Butler?
Hi, Tom. Thanks for having us. Jeremy Butler, been married to my wife Billy for 20, almost 20, coming up on 21 years. We have an adult son Levi and his beautiful wife Molly, along with our daughter Ellie, who is a senior. I own and operate Butler Insurance Services. I'm actually an independent agent with Rocker Carnes &amp; Carnes. I'm very much part of the BKK team, but I do own my own book of business. I'm not employed by them, but like I said, we're very much a part of the team. We complement each other very, very well. The main portion of my book of business is churches. I insure about over 170 churches throughout the state of Iowa. Been involved in the community for a long time. Started out in the Atlantic J.C.'s, you know, was a member of that, I think until I aged out. Actually, so from 21 to 40, I was a member of the Atlantic J.C.'s, two times president there. Then I got pretty involved with the church that I grew up in. After Billy and I got married, I've gone through several council seats there. I think this is the third time I've been council president. That ends in January. I was on the Park and Rec Committee before that was dissolved. On the elected committee, I was appointed and was going to run at the next election, but they dissolved that. I was part of the committee that helped pass the bond issue for the outdoor facility upgrades for the Atlantic School Systems. And the last thing that I took on was I was the co-chair of the fundraising committee for the splash pad that got completed this spring. So just really like giving back to the community. That's given a lot to me and looking forward to this next challenge.
Mr. Behrens?
Thanks, Tom. So we came to Atlantic in 84. Would have been my freshman year of high school. Since then, we did, I did work with scouting, Cub Scouts for several years. And then we went on. I was on planning and zoning for a while. Then I ran for first ward until they changed the districting and then I got moved to second ward. So I'm completing my sixth year on the council. I worked at Heritage House. I've been there for 22 years in the maintenance department. So I just believe that you can't complain about anything if you're not willing to participate. I mean, the best way to not have something to complain about is to get out there and participate and be active in the community.
Just go back to Dana and Mr. Halter there. And talk about why you're seeking reelection.
You know, just to continue with what I believe is to try and, you know, keep Atlantic looking good and get some more economic development going, just to make life better for everybody. And one of my motivators, of course, is my wife June. And she's been a great volunteer in town. And that's the kind of people it takes to keep things moving. And so that's what I want to continue to work on.
Mr. Butler?
So just to start off, I'd like to say, we've got an amazing council right now and have had for quite a few years. I just want to continue being part of that. You know, as I've taken on different leadership roles throughout the different organizations that I've been, that I've been a part of, you know, one of my main goals has always been, you know, leading by empowering other people. One of the, the first time I was the chapter president for the Atlantic J.C.'s, Phil Hetrick, I was working for him at the time. And he said, if you only remember one piece of advice, remember this, delegate authority. Well, I mean, he was telling me to not try to do everything myself, but I, that delegate is really, delegate authority, not delegate jobs, not delegate responsibility, delegate authority. So you, you give somebody a job to do, but you also give up that control and let them go do it. That doesn't mean there's no oversight or, or that they don't have to answer back to you, but you, you, you give them, you know, you let them go do the job that they want to do.
Mr. Behrens, talk about your inspiration to seek reelection again.
Atlantic's a great town. We have a lot going on, but over the years, I think the structure of everything has changed. You know, it used to be when I was a kid growing up, to go to Des Moines to the state fair was a huge trip. And now people do it daily. And that's, that's affected the small towns is, is the means of transportation and stuff. And we just need to figure out a way of what we need here to keep going. That's...
Thank you, Mr. Behrens. Mr. Claussen, you answered that question earlier, so I didn't skip over you on purpose. We're going to start off, and I want to talk about Vision Atlantic. Currently raising money for the expansion of the YMCA and construction of a 300-capacity child development center. Financing is secure for the 142 housing development project. Fundraising continues in order to meet an 80% goal by December 31st to activate that $8.6 million Lakin Foundation grant. And that would fund the YMCA expansion and the 300-capacity childcare development facility projects. How important do you think this is to the city? And what do you see the city's financial involvement in this moving forward?
I think this is extremely important to the city. I view this as a fantastic opportunity. I did spend some time on the board at Ann Wickman. And the one thing that never changed up there was the building was full. It was constantly full. There's always a waiting list. Childcare is, is a problem. And moving forward, we have a lot of home providers that are getting out of the business. And such is the same with business across the board. A lot of businesses are leaving now and nobody's coming in to replace them. So I think the childcare part of it is very important. The YMCA, we approved it last time when we built it. If you build it, they'll come. We went from an old YMCA with a dozen people in it to what we have now. And, and it does need to grow a little bit. And they've got plans for theater and some other stuff in there that I think will be really well. As far as the city's involvement in it, I think the city does owe something to it, to be real honest with you. It's going to expand our tax base. And with any kind of luck, one thing I would like to see is to stop the shrinking population in the city of Atlantic and at least get us to a dead level and perhaps begin a little growth back. In 1980, this town had 7,700 and change people in it. Today it has 6,700 people in it. We've spent a lot of time attracting business and trying to do that, bring the jobs and the people will come, was always the idea. We've brought the jobs on two or three different occasions. If you go back far enough, American buildings, plastics now, elk carts out there, the bearing plant's still going at this point, and an ethanol plant. We've brought the jobs and hasn't brought population. So let's do the houses. Let's try that. Let's see if we bring the people. Because one of the biggest stumbling blocks, we run into two major stumbling blocks when we try to recruit business to this community. What we're running into is we don't have traffic count. We have it on the east end of town. We don't have it on the western of town. And we are lacking a labor force. If a larger company looks at us and wants to come in and take advantage of what Atlantic has to offer, they're looking for employees. I was in that world myself for decades. And you need good valuable people in order to provide goods and services. And if we do the housing, I think maybe we can at least get the beginnings of a labor force. These things are all contingent, going to help Atlantic. It's going to help Atlantic. Atlantic needs to help it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Claussen. Mr. Butler, again, I'll review the question. Vision Atlantic is currently raising money for the expansion of YMCA and construction of a 300-capacity child development center. Again, financing is secure for the housing. It's underway, actually. But it continues in order to meet an 80% goal by December 31st to activate an $8.6 million Lakin Foundation grant to fund the YMCA expansion and 300-capacity childcare development facility. Again, how important do you think this project is to this community? And what do you see as the city's financial involvement moving forward?
Well, I see this as a very important project for the community. You know, in my lifetime, I've never seen anything with this much momentum, this much planning, this much organization. These volunteers, and you do have to remember, these are volunteers that make up Vision Atlantic, and they have donated thousands of hours of time. And one thing that I really find interesting is that every single person that is on, on that committee in any way, shape, or form, has made a financial pledge to the project. I agree with Rob that it will increase our tax base. You know, when I talk to, to the chamber or CADCO, the one thing they say when employees or when companies are looking, coming to town is, you don't have housing for, for potential employees. You don't have enough daycare. You know, people are looking for, for things that enhance life, such as the YMCA, the splash pad, the amazing job that our swimming pool did this, this summer. I am completely on board for the commitment that the, that the city has given so far. I've been one of the first ones to tell the members of Vision that, that I'm not a rubber stamp on the rest, you know, future money, but I'll have some questions. And, you know, as I should. And I want to see, you know, investment to return. You know, you show me what, what this can do to our tax base, what this is going to do long-term, not right away, but what this is going to do long-term. And, you know, if they, if they check off those boxes for me, I am 100% on board. This is another one of those projects that, that, you know, an individual group has, has put this together and they get, they're getting it done. You know, the YMCA, when it was built, was that way. I mean, every major project like this in Atlantic has been a group like that. That's what you do. You empower those people. You give them the tools that they need and the support that they need. And, you know, you don't try to micromanage it and you don't try to, you definitely don't try to undermine it. And by doing those things with some oversight, you know, amazing things happen in our community.
Thank you very much for your comment. Mr. Behrens?
Well, I think that the city has really stood behind Vision Atlantic between, with the land that they're using and the money that, that the city has appropriated to, to help so far. It's, it's something that Atlantic needs. The daycare problem in this, in all of Iowa is terrible. I mean, parents can't afford to work because of daycare and you can't find daycare. So the daycare center is much needed in Atlantic. The, the whole plan, if you haven't read through it and looked at how the plan plays out long-term and what the housing situation up there is, as the houses sell, the money goes into a trust, which helps the daycare center over time. I mean, there's all kinds of stuff in that, but you have to really read it and understand how the Lakin Foundation is making this a long-term plan. So.
Well, Tom, they all took my... Actually, I, you know, I think it's a great project. And, you know, bringing, I mean, we gotta try and bring more people to town. And with the daycare center, hopefully, you know, having an affordable daycare for people will give us, give us that extra workforce that we need. So it gives them a chance to go out and work rather than stay home every day with their kids, which is not a bad thing. But as far as the donations and that, we've had some fantastic donors and I got a feeling there's probably some more out there. And if, I would be awesome if those could come forward. As far as the city, you know, like it was said, we've donated the, the land along with the other monetary. I'm not opposed to more, but I would like to see what it will do to our tax base. And we got to back up and remember too, you know, as far as Atlantic, we've got some of the cheapest utility rates in the state of Iowa. So, you know, there's a lot of good things here and we, we got to keep that going. And so that's where I'm at.
Mr. Halter, thank you very much. Mr. Butler, what is your vision for the city of Atlantic for the next five to 10 years?
You know, I would like to see Atlantic turn around and start growing again. One, one thing that you have to remember, though, as far as the, the decline in our population is large families aren't the norm anymore. You see somebody with four kids now and you go, wow, you know, are they crazy? Or, or how do they do that? Well, when, when we were growing up, that was just, that was just a family, you know, three, four, five kids, six kids, wasn't that huge of a deal. So that is some of the, the decline is people don't have as many children at home as they did. But, you know, we, we, we are on, I said the last time that we talked, Tom, that, that there's a momentum going in Atlantic that, that I've never seen in my lifetime. You know, there are just so many positives going on right now. And I would just like to be a part of that. One thing that I think needs to happen is communication between different organizations in town. So they're not stepping on each other's toes. They're not trying to go after the same things at the same time. You know, you don't have two organizations trying to do the same thing. You know, maybe there's some overlap there that both of these projects could have some fat trimmed off of because they're both trying to do the same thing. I see that in, within the city as well. You know, communication between departments and just, just improving communication, listening to the constituents and taking the knowledge that you get from listening to them and making a choice that you think is best for the majority of the town.
So you're talking about, I mean, we've got several projects on the books. You're talking about maybe those different committees, maybe working together a little bit more? Is that what you're talking about?
Communicating, yes. You know, when we started raising the money for the splash pad, the first thing that I did was I sat down with Dan Haynes and I said, you know, I've heard that that might be something that the YMCA is considering sometime. Is this something that's on your radar? Because if it is, it's ridiculous for us to go to try to build one at, at Sunnyside Pool. And I left his office that day and he, you know, he said, nope, go for it. We've got other things that we're working on and are in the works, which now we know what they are. But, you know, he gave us his blessing and not meaning that if we hadn't have gotten the wise blessing, that we would have just scrapped the project. But at least we had that conversation to make sure that there weren't two organizations out there trying to do the same thing.
Thank you very much. Mr. Behrens?
So I, five years, would like to see, you know, the housing's starting to fill up up there in, in Vision Atlantic's project. I think we need to have more listening sessions like we had this year. The road or street project down on Commerce and State Street, I think will impact that area down there of industry. And with the county moving out of that area, that opens up space down there for new industry to come in, in those buildings. So I think there's a lot of things that can happen. When they did the Shelberg Rock Quarry and put the campground back there, it was like, you know, there was a lot of feedback that nobody's going to go down there and camp. Well, that campground is full year round. I mean, there's a lot of traveling workers that, that stay down there year round. So I mean, there's, there's a lot of movement in town. When you drive through town and you see equipment along the highway, where they're building a new vision place out where State Farm used to be, there's another business going where they tore a house down on the highway. There's, there's a lot of momentum and we just need to keep it going.
Mr. Halter?
Well, I would love to see a steakhouse in town, along with everyone else. Just, you know, to, to get some of the things going in some of these empty properties that have been for sale for a while and to utilize some of the buildings that are not being used. If we can get them somehow to turn over to situations where they do bring more people to Atlantic and just the continued growth in that area.
Much like Dana said earlier, you guys have taken all the good answers. But no, in five years, I would like to see the population slide stop and start crawling back the other direction. Same thing with the buildings. I'd like to see the empty buildings get filled up. I'd like to see some, some new businesses come to town. We've, we've gone through a little transition here in the last five years where, you know, with, with hardware stores and other businesses that were longtime businesses in Atlantic that have just ceased. They haven't been taken over by somebody else or something. I'd like to see some marketing done in that area, do something like that. Also, as far as the efficiency of city government, a lot of this is from the outside looking in. I've not been a member. I've not been a participant in it. But just me outside looking in, it looks to me like something what Councilman Behrens was talking about was some listening sessions, a little bit of organization, a little bit of can we all, you know, kind of chat about a few things and get everybody on the same end of the wagon, you know? If you all push from the same end, it goes a lot farther and a lot faster. So I'd like to, those would be the things, I guess. It's just more efficiency. Let's market some business. The housing is gonna, is it, for five years, it's going to take that. But there we go.
Thank you very much. Next question to Mr. Behrens. We'll start with Mr. Behrens here. How do you define good leadership in local government?
Well, I think you got to look and see. I mean, you need to be involved in it and you need to actually go out and, and look at what's going on. You know, just driving through town, you're, we're constantly looking at, at things and, and seeing, you know, what the street conditions are, that kind of stuff. And then as far as leadership, you know, modeling the way, just, you know. And, and I think there's two different sides of town. There's, there's areas of town that will never meet our codes, just from the conditions of the houses and stuff. And you, you can't, if those people are retired and on fixed incomes, I mean, we're never going to get them to the, to the level that the other part of town or the new addition to town is at. So I think there's, that we, we need to do some looking at that and evaluate how, how we do some of the code enforcement.
Mr. Halter?
I think with a lot of us, just bringing people together and communication and keeping the communication all together so that people know what our objective is and what we want to accomplish.
Mr. Claussen?
Just the basics. I think public safety is something that cannot be taken lightly. I think it has to be looked at and studied and understood. Police firing EMS needs to be properly funded, properly managed, and properly trained. We need to know that we can move around in our community safely and that if we have a medical emergency or something, the help is on the way and it's not going to take 40 minutes to get them to you. You know, just keep in mind that, that bare basic stuff.
Very good. Mr. Butler?
Well, and, and just expanding off what Rob says, you know, just on social media and the news, coffee shops, one of the big things that's been talked about is, is the electric scooters around town. And, you know, I was so happy to hear, you know, at my first meeting, I believe, was the, was the first reading of, of the new code. And, and the fact that they are listening and, and not just giving lip service, they are, they are, you know, making changes to, to address those issues. Again, like I said, you know, leadership, you, you, you listen to your constituents. You know, a lot of people, even in my business, you know, somebody will call and they'll start complaining and complaining and complaining and you listen to them, listen to them, listen to them. And at the end of it, it's like, well, what would you like me to do? How can I fix this? And a lot of times, there's not a fix. They just wanted somebody to listen to them. You know, a lot of times, there's nothing wrong with, with controversy. It's how it's, it's how it's handled. You know, growth comes from disagreements. And it's, it's okay if Jim and I disagree on something. We can sit and have a civil conversation and, you know, we might not leave agreeing on it, but we, we might leave respecting each other's side. And another thing, building off of what he said with, with some of the deficiencies on properties in town, it, it does take a little bit more time. But instead of fining somebody just straight out of the gate, maybe have a conversation with them. And Chris does an amazing job on that. But have a conversations with them. See why they're not mowing their yard. Maybe their mower doesn't run. Maybe it's something that, that another group in town could easily help them with to help them maintain their property rather than just, you know, here's your fine, here's your fine, here's your fine. If they don't have the money to fix their mower, they're not going to have the money to pay the penalties for not doing that. So some conversations just throughout the community, I think are, are key.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Butler. Mr. Halter, this question, we'll start with you here. If elected and reelected, how will you stay connected with residents? How do you represent?
Well, we've had our meetings before and we'll, I'm sure, we'll continue that. And again, there, you know, people are always welcome to come to the, to the council meetings and voice their opinions. And my phone number's out there. I'm willing to take phone calls anytime. You know, I'm, I'm willing to listen to anybody and anything they want to talk about. I, I just, you know, I think Atlantic is a fantastic town and, you know, to, to come to town and have the splash pad, the pool, the sunnyside, the two golf courses, the parks area that we do. It takes a lot to take care of that. And so, you know, we need to stay behind that, too.
Mr. Claussen?
Pretty much the same thing. If you've got a grievance or a problem, I'll listen. If there's any way I can help, I'll do my best. I'm, I'm kind of a fix-it guy. If you bring me a problem, I'm probably going to try and figure out how to solve it. If you bring me a complaint, bring a solution with and we'll talk about it and see if it's viable. If I don't have the answer, I will search out the answer and I do return phone calls.
Mr. Butler?
Just the same thing. Listen to people. All right, just the, the same thing. Listen to people. You know, be willing to have some of those difficult conversations. You know, growth comes from difficult conversations usually. You know, the, the, the sessions that you guys have had, you know, I'm looking forward to, to being a part of those. Another community that I think we need to maybe have a listening session with is, is the Pacific Island community. You know, they're not probably going to come to another meeting. And, you know, most of them are not voters, but they're still citizens of Atlantic, you know. How, what can we do to help you and what, you know, just open up some communication, just to see if there are some simple solutions to, to, you know, a few of the problems that, that have happened.
Good. We'll start with Dana here on this question. If elected, reelected, in your case, how would you measure your success as a city councilman?
I feel like I've worked really hard to try and get some of the, the deteriorated properties cleaned up. I did bring forward to have the scooter ordinance. So those are a couple of things. And just, you know, I, I drive around town a lot and I look at different areas that, that need attention. And I talk to Chris Erickson, our code enforcement officer, quite often. And you have to understand that with the laws, it doesn't move as fast as you want it to. But, you know, that's one of my things that I want to keep working on.
Mr. Clausen, how would you measure your success as a mayor?
Well, I don't have a lot of benchmarks to go by at this point, Tom. But I would, I would hope that I can do a decent job and work with people, facilitate, you know, some change, like Dana's talking about, properties and stuff like that. Let's see if we can do some of that. Fortunately, we've already got some of that going on. There's two houses on the west side of town on Seventh Street that are both being rehabbed right now by private individuals. A couple of, a couple of properties that have needed it and now they're getting it. That's good. But I think basically you've just got to be available to people and you've got to, you just got to help them, Tom. That's all there is.
Jeremy, how would you measure success as a city councilman?
Well, you know, Gerald Brink paved the way for the, the seat that I am, that I am sitting in right now. He, he did an amazing job. So I've got some pretty big shoes to fill. But right now, I'm doing a lot of, I'll be doing a lot of learning and I've got a great wealth of knowledge from, from the councilmen that have, and women that have, that have sat there. You know, just continue to work with them, help in any way that I can, learn, not be scared to let my opinion be known, even if it is not popular. You know, let it be known and, and we, we work it out. Just, just, you know, be a part of the change that you want to see rather than be part of the problem.
Mr. Barron's.
So, as a councilman, there's different groups, whether it be Fire Department, Airport, Library Boards, that all the councilmen sit on. And I sit on the Fire Department as a liaison between the Fire Department and the city. But when they need something, to make sure that they're getting what they need from public safety and making sure that all the council knows that there's an issue or that we need something. Public safety is, is extremely important. So you need to be doing that. I can be reached anytime. Call me if there's something going on and we'll see what we can do. But that's the biggest thing. One thing that keeps, I, I keep forgetting is when we talk about the census of Atlantic and the population of Atlantic, we need to realize that the Pacific Islanders came in after the last census. So the population of Atlantic is actually going to increase.
Tom, can I add one more thing off of what Jim said, you know, the, now I lost my train of thought. Oh, no, now, now I remember. So I have been starting to meet with some of these department heads and I know that as I serve on the boards that I've been assigned, you know, you, you see people complaining or hear people complaining that, you know, so and so's not doing their job. I had no idea the extent of the work like, like Chris Erickson. You know, I, I met with her and I mean, the amount of paperwork and work that she does. I mean, she doesn't just drive around looking at houses. She, I mean, these, these city employees are, are busy and these, you know, volunteer organizations like the Fire Department, the things that they do and the things that they need to be successful is, I, I'm really looking forward to that part of the job is, is learning about more of these, these organizations that are part of the city.
You have a good point. And, and I think, you know, there are a lot of different departments. Park and Rec is another big, I know they've got a lot of wants, I guess, and maybe needs. When I ask you that question, Rob, I mean, how would, as a mayor, how do you plan to support the Park and Rec Department and the Advisory Commission in keeping this portion of our community vibrant?
This, this portion of our community is, is extremely important. I've actually got to educate myself a little further on everything they do, but I believe they're, I believe they're mowing in excess of 100 or 200 acres. I think we could probably, you know, give them a little more help in there. They're taking care of an awful lot of stuff. Every time we work on something, we give them a new project. You know, it was great that we got Schilberg developed and all of that, but it made a distinct difference in the Park Department. You know, here's a lot of work out there to be done. I would be a big supporter of the Parks Department. I think it's very important that they get properly funded, properly traineded, trained, I should say. I don't know if we need a Parks Director. We don't have one currently. That's been a change we've tried. We probably ought to look at how it was before, how it is now. Is it better the way we're doing it? Is it not so good the way we're doing it? But it does need looked at and I would like to make sure that that continues and goes well.
Mr. Butler, again, you know, how do you plan to support the Park and Rec Department and Advisory Commission, which has changed, obviously, from the park board we had before that Mr. Clausen mentioned, too? What's your thought of that?
Well, of course, I'm going to support, you know, Park and Rec. I, I was on the elected board as an appointment before it was dissolved. Very involved with them as far as raising the money for the splash pad, making sure that was going to happen. But, but Rob is right. We, we do continue to put, you know, that splash pad, that added stuff for them to do. You know, they now have to make sure that it's clean and operating correctly. And there's just a lot of moving pieces. Unfortunately, we can't just go in and say, well, we're going to fully fund everything you want and we're going to, you know, do this, this and this because there are budgets to, to take care of, too. But I think it definitely needs to be looked at. As far as the Park Commission, I've talked to, you know, several of the members there. They were just kind of like, here you go. You know, I think they need, you know, job descriptions, better job descriptions so they have better understanding of, of how they operate, where they fit into, where they fit into the program. You know, do they just go to Jeff? Or the, there are two council liaisons that are, that are great. But I, I think there just needs to be some clarity on, on, you know, what their responsibilities are, what their limitations are, you know, and things like that. Again, just open conversations. But I believe that our park, we, we've got one of the best park systems for a city our size anywhere. You know, eventually we probably need to look into amount of dollars per capita that we, that we spend on our parks compared to other communities, you know, similar in size to us with, with similar sized park systems and, and look into things like that. But no, I completely support the, the Park and Rec Department and I support the, the Park Commission as well.
Mr. Barron's.
So Park and Rec, you know, totally support Park and Rec. And when you look at people coming to Atlantic and moving to Atlantic, recreation is one of the things that they're looking at. They're looking for daycare, they're looking for houses and they're looking for what they're going to do for fun. So recreation here is huge. To have good trails, bike paths, that kind of stuff. I know we keep trying to hook up to the T Bone Trail and it hasn't happened yet, but I know that there's still committees working on that. The disc golf out here, people come from all over to play disc golf in Atlantic. That's fantastic. I think Jeff does a great job out there of promoting the parks and taking care of that stuff. So I think the, the Park Board is really looking at a lot of things that they want to do. And I think as a city council, we need to sit down and look at, at what, what funding they have and, and actually narrow it down a little bit. I think it's kind of loose.
Mr. Holder.
I think we have a great park situation. I, I, you know, I know we don't have a director and I'm not really, I don't really believe that things have deteriorated because of it. I think we have some good employees out there. Sometimes I think maybe they get pushed 10 different ways and do their best to take care of it. And I think Jeff tries his best to do what he can and come up with new activities and things. And so that, you know, having, having that helps create new, new activities and hopefully we can carry that forward. And I, I think the Advisory Commission has been a good thing, too.
Rob, final comments here, guys, as we're going to wrap things up here. And any final comments, any points you want to make here?
I guess my final comments would be all, I'm going to reiterate a little bit here. But Jeremy brought this up, but I do think we have an extremely strong council in place right now. And I think that is to our advantage. I think that's going to be to my advantage. You know, I'm a, I'm running unopposed. I'm more than likely going to get there. I know we haven't finished that yet, but we're getting there. The city of Atlantic, I think, is a fantastic city. People visit, like I say, we've got a lot going for us here. I do believe we have the, the momentum. Let's keep the momentum going. But final thoughts, I guess, I'd just say that one thing I will do is I'll, I'll continue to tell the truth and I'll continue to do my best. So.
Mr. Butler, final comments?
Yeah, just, you know, some of the things that I was talking about with communication. You know, Dana brought up a, a perfect example, you know, having Park and Rec, you know, Jeff, he, he does an amazing job. Have him know who he is supposed to answer to because sometimes he has five different people telling him what to do. Who he answers to, you know, the, the commission, do they go through Jeff and then onto the city council? Do they go through their liaisons and then onto the city council? Do they go straight to John Lund if they need something? You know, just some, some parameters so they know how things operate. And I'm just using that as an example. I'm sure there might be some other areas of the, of the, the city employees that is the same way. You know, that, that maybe there needs to be a little bit more black and white as far as this is, this is the, the hierarchy and this is how it works. I just want people to know that I'm always going to be available. I will always listen. Might not always agree with you, but I will always listen. And, you know, I'm just really looking forward to, to working with, with this council. They are strong. They are forward thinking and I'm just excited to be a part of it.
Mr. Barron's.
So, under Ward Two, it's, it's kind of interesting because there's, there's a lot of business in Ward Two and not as much population. Under, under, the way that it's looked at when you run for office is that it's only residential properties. But I just want to make it, everybody know that if you have a business in Ward Two and you need something, call me. I'm, I'm still going to take the call and I'm still going to try to help you the best I can. And that kind of stuff. I, out of six years, I've, I've seen a lot of things. I've seen a lot of things happen that were good. Some things, unfortunately, there's not a lot we can do about. You know, bull creek constantly becomes a problem. But what a lot of people don't understand is our hands are halfway tied because of the Army Corps of Engineers tells us what we can and can't do with bull creek. So we can come up with a lot of plans for things, but when you get into the regulations and stuff of it, you don't know if it's going to happen or not, unfortunately.
Final thoughts, Mr. Holder.
Well, you know, I just think Atlantic's a great town. We've, my wife and I, June, have lived in five different communities and Atlantic is by far the best of all of them. And along with that, we have to, we have to say kudos to our crews out there, the Street Department, the Fire Department, you know, the Atlantic Utilities, even our, our city staff is, they're all great people. And I think if we just bring everybody together and communicate. And one thing that I just actually thought of is, would be great, I know here a few weeks back, we had a political thing in the park and it was amazing how many people would come up to the table. And maybe we should have a city council table with the produce in the park during the summer. Might be a good idea to have people come and make their comments there.
Gentlemen, thank you very much. Again, Dana Holder, incumbent, incumbent city councilman representing Fifth Ward, Rob Clausen, mayoral candidate, all running unopposed. Also, Mr. Jeremy Butler, candidate for the Atlantic City Council, a large seat currently serving that seat by appointment. And Mr. Jim Barron's incumbent city councilman representing Second Ward, running unopposed. Guys, thank you very much for taking your time here on this Sunday evening. Jeremy?
Thanks, Tom. No, I just was going to, yeah.
Appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
Coming up next, we're going to talk to the four candidates for the Atlantic School Board. That'll be coming up next here on KS 95.7 FM and our live stream, westernhourday.com and TV and YouTube. We'll have those four gentlemen, all four gentlemen coming up next here in just a little bit. And good evening once again. Welcome back to our Meet Your Candidates Forum. We want to thank the three city councilmen and mayoral candidates for joining us here a little bit earlier. Now, we're going to meet our four school board candidates running for two, two seats on the school board here coming up, our November 4th election. We're going to introduce those gentlemen, the far left, Justin Williams, Mr. Jordan Obano, Mr. Chet Manili and Mr. Josh McLaren, joining us here on KS 95.7 FM, our live stream, westernhourday.com, TV and YouTube. We'll start with Mr. Josh, Justin Williams, and tell us about yourself, Justin.
Well, thanks for having me tonight here, Tom. Appreciate you guys covering us. First thing, my name's Justin Williams. I'm lifelong resident of Atlantic. I am married. My wife is a guidance counselor. We have two children. We have a 26-year-old, a six-year-old. Young man came into our life, kind of stole our heart. So he, he became part of our family a couple of years ago during COVID. So quite a, quite a diverse family. I was an educator here in Atlantic for 13 years and then I also coached prior to that, lived in Atlantic most of my life, really, really enjoy the, the town and, and enjoy the school when I worked there. When I left, left for, for, you know, advancement purposes. So looking forward to maybe coming back and trying to help the school out.
Yeah, thanks, Tom, for having us. I'm born and raised here in Atlantic. I've got two kids. I actually just got engaged to my fiancee Courtney yesterday. Yeah, thank you. Graduated from Atlantic in 2019. Got a big family here in town. I got a bunch of cousins, nieces and nephews in the school system. I used to work for the school as well. Currently working at the First Interstate Bank. Community involvement, I've been a part of the Let's Make Them Smile fundraiser now. It used to be known as the Joe Dirt Fundraising Memorial that helps out the local shop with the cop program and all their, their needs. Takes the kids on the summer school trips and the zoo trips and camping and whatnot. So, yeah, I got, like I said, I got two kids. I got the one in pre-kindergarten. She's, you know, loving the school and I just want to find a way to help out where I can.
Very good. Thank you very much. Mr. Manili.
Hello. Thanks, Tom. Thanks, guys. So my name's Chet Manili. My wife, Casey Manili. We're both residents of Atlantic, both grew up in Atlantic, both alumni from Atlantic. We're both residents of Atlantic, both grew up in Atlantic, both alumni from Atlantic. You know, decided to move back and, and start a family here. We just love Atlantic. It's given us a lot of opportunities and I think it's time for us to, you know, start giving back to the community. I have a couple of kids, a three-year-old, a little older than a one-year-old, and just looking to, you know, help out and do what I can for the, the school district and, and everyone else.
Mr. McLaren.
Yeah, thanks again, Tom, and KSOM, or I guess Meredith Communications. But Josh McLaren, my wife and I live, obviously both born and raised here. I graduated in 1999 from Atlantic. I have three, three boys. One has moved on, one's a senior, and then one is a freshman. So I've, I think I've been on the board, I think 13 years or so. It's, I really enjoy it. It's a good way to give back and, and I'd like to just keep moving forward with that.
We'll go back to Mr. Williams. Tell me why you're running. Why did you decide to run?
Well, you know, I've had some friends over the years after I've left asked me to, to step up and, and run for board. I just didn't think it was the right time. And then after just kind of seeing some of the, the issues that we have at hand here with the proposed field house and some of those things, I really felt that it was really an important time for somebody who really understands school finance, who's been a part of administration, who's been a part of education for a lot of years, to step up and, and help get us through this time. I know right now we are really facing some uncertain times in, in the economy and different things like that. And so I just feel really strongly that we're gonna have some really tough decisions over the next couple of years to make and we're gonna need leadership to, to be able to make those decisions. So.
Mr. Zabano.
Yeah, I, I like giving back to the community. What can I say? This is a great way to give back. I care about the kids. Obviously, like I said, I got, I got, you know, dogs in the fight per se with all my nieces, nephews, cousins, my own kids coming up. And if, you know, if I want, if I, if I feel like if I want to have a say in, you know, where we go with, you know, our schools and community wise, I need to step up and, you know, kind of put, put my money where my mouth is and get out there and really help and, you know, help make these big decisions, you know, bring a new, fresh perspective to things, you know. I've, I've said it before, I'm, I think I'm the youngest person. If I got on the current board, I think I'd be the youngest person by 15 to 20 years. And if, you know, if, if, you know, if Chet and I got on the board, you know, I think, you know, I'd still be the youngest by at least 10, I would say. So.
Careful.
Sorry, maybe nine, maybe nine. So I'm pretty young. I, I think I'd bring a pretty fresh perspective there. But, you know, I'm, I'm willing to step into those shoes and, you know, step up.
Thank you very much. Mr. Manili.
Just want to repeat the question again.
Yes, sir. Talk about why you decided to run.
Yeah, so I just decided to run. You know, my kids are getting a little older, older and they will be going into, you know, the school system here, you know, and I decided, you know, that there, there are some, there are going to be some important decisions to be made, you know, at least it looks like that, you know, coming up in the future here. And that I felt like I want to be involved in, you know, some of those decisions and, you know, hopefully lead the community and the, and the school district in the right way.
Mr. McLaren, of course, running for reelection here. You've been on the board, what'd you say, 13 years?
I think so. Don't quote me on that.
You're gonna run again. Talk about that.
It's hard to be the fourth one to answer the question. I would say, I, I just, we have a lot of great things going on every day within our buildings and our camp, our different campuses around. And it is, it's a, it's a very unique position and it, it's fun and it does have, there's a lot of rewards with it. And, and I guess I, as these guys, I still have two, two children in the system and I just, I, we, we have some things going that I want to see get to the finish line and, and, and help those things get to, get there and, and continue doing what's best for the kids.
Mr. Zabano, you get to answer the first question here. And we talked, and Mr. Williams brought it up with the issue. I think the real issue is the three ballot measures that are coming up. And I'm, I'm gonna take this in at least two parts, maybe three, but we'll start with the 22 and a half million dollar general obligation bond to fund improvement and expansion project at Washington Elementary, Schuler Elementary, Atlantic Middle School, and Atlantic High School. The general obligation bonds require a super majority of 60% to pass. Sales tax revenue bonds and RPS measures require majority approval of at least 50%. We'll get to that later. An approved general obligation bond would have a tax impact of $1.10 for $1,000 of taxable property value for a home assessed of 150,000. And this would amount to an annual increase of around $70.93. And the annual impact for ag property would be approximately $1.63 per acre based on the CAS county average assessed value of 2,007 per acre. So again, the 22 and a half million is for improvements and expansion projects at Washington, Schuler, Atlantic Middle School, and the Atlantic High School. Your thoughts?
So, my thoughts are, you know, the elephant in the room is Washington. You know, that obviously needs done. Anybody who's walked that school, walked around, have been in it, it, you know, that need, they need improvements and they need it, you know, today rather than yesterday. Or tomorrow, I should say. So, you know, as far as the school improvements go, I, I believe that is a necessity. You know, the tax impact, I feel like, you know, it's, you know, what is, what, what is the, the goal here? Are we, you know, save money? Or are we gonna try to make our kids, you know, if, if we educate our kids in a healthy, safe environment, you know, the goal is we can educate them, they can come back and they can, they can give money back to our community as well by living here, raising their kids here and moving on, you know, with that. So I feel like if we give them a healthy, safe environment to, you know, get educated in, I feel like that's the best, you know, that's the best thing moving forward with, you know, at least those improvements.
You support the 22 and a half million dollar bond issue?
I would say, yeah, I support it because our kids need a happy, healthy, you know, education environment. And, yeah, I'll go on record saying I support that 100%.
Thank you, Mr. Zabano. Same thing, Mr. Manili. Again, it's the 22 and a half million to fund improvements and expansion projects at Washington, Schuler, Atlantic, and Atlantic High School. Your thoughts on that?
Yeah, with the bond, you know, I'm, I am for the bond. You know, I think, you know, the board has done their job and done their part and, you know, found deeds that, you know, have, have come up, you know, and they've ranked them in priority of, you know, most important and least important. And, you know, Washington's important, safety's important, you know, affecting the taxpayers the least amount's important. And so, you know, to me, it's pretty clear and cut that something needs to be done. And if we, you know, hold off on this, it's just gonna get more expensive. It's gonna get pushed down the road. And, you know, nothing's gonna get done until 2027, 2028. So all for it.
Thank you, Mr. McLaren. Talk about this.
Yeah, obviously, I kind of have a unique being on the board and, and part of those conversations. And we've been talking about these things for quite a while with, with different, you know, outside entities and those type of things. And as, as Chet said, you know, we did, we prioritize things. We've looked at the dollars and, and the needs and the safety and the educational environment. And, and that's why, you know, I think we've come to, to the position that we're at with the bond issue. And, and so, yeah, I'm, I'm absolutely for the, the 18 and a half million, or the 22 and a half million dollar bond issue.
Mr. Williams.
Well, I'm gonna take a little bit different perspective here, Tom. I'm definitely for all improvements at Washington. 100% for them. I do think that right now, if we're talking safety of our students, we have roughly $3 million in Save and Pepple funds right now that we could take care of the security today. So I want to be really clear about that. If we're, if we're talking about security for kids, let's get it done. Let's get it done right now. I am 100% for improvements at Washington. Okay? I have a kid there. I've walked through there. That place hasn't changed since maybe me and Josh went there back in the, the 90s. And I, we're dating ourselves here, but I've gotta say, I, I am 100% for that. I think that there are other things in that GO bond that could be taken care of through our Save and Pepple right now. Schuler. Schuler could be put on that with security and, with security and Schuler Restrooms. We're only talking 1.1 million dollars. We have $3 million in there right now. So those two projects could be done. Okay? We've, we've identified those as major projects. Okay? If we didn't want to impact our tax base right now, we could, we could bond against our Save without any public, without any public chance of a vote. And we could take those Save dollars and we could put them 100% to Washington. That's what the law is intended for, if we wanted to do that. So if we see that problem, we definitely could do that. So, am I, am I in favor of fixes at Washington? Yes. Do I think that we need to look at this from a different lens, step back and really make sure that we have our priorities moving forward? Yes. I think that, that that's what we need to do right now. I think we have to stop. And I think we really have to make sure we're putting the school in the best financial position we possibly can. And, you know, we don't know where student counts and things are gonna be. We could have massive drops in there. School districts all around us right now are seeing massive drops in their student population. I work at one that's, that's seen close to 100 in two years. There's another one that's close to the city who's lost over 120 to online learning. That has deeply impacted their budgets. Okay? So I don't want to have to make a decision if I get on the board. There, I'm choosing between building, you know, buildings or employing staff members. So I want to be really, really careful about how I say and how I support and what I want to do. I really want to step back and make sure that we're taking care of ourself fiscally. And, and so I disagree with, with some aspects of it. Do I think we could do Washington tomorrow? I do. I think we could do it and I know we need it.
That's how the bond issue sets. Do you support the 22 and a half million?
I support, I support improvements at Washington Elementary. And if the board absolutely feels that that's the only way that we can do it and we have to do it now, then yes.
Okay, yeah.
But until, I'm convinced of that, which I am not, that, that's, that's one of the things that I think we have to step back at. And if it takes a year, it takes a year. But we've got to do what's fiscally responsible. That's our, that's our second most important job as a board. Our first is academic responsibility and our second is fiscal responsibility. So I, that's how I feel.
Good. Thank you very much. Mr. Zabano, or Mr. Manili, excuse me, you'll, let's talk about the 18 and a half million dollar sales tax revenue bond. It's to finance the construction of a new multipurpose activity center at the high school. Your thoughts?
I guess the activity center, you know, to me, I believe in it. You know, I think it would be something that, you know, the, the students, the staff and the community could get a lot of use out of. You know, I think that, you know, from what the, you know, the board has, you know, presented that, you know, they, they thought of, you know, all the possibilities and everything and that, you know, to me, it, you know, it's, it would be something nice to have, you know? I mean, I, I know, talking to a lot of parents, you know, that have, you know, kids that, you know, there is a need for space. Now, do I think it takes precedent over Washington? No. Or the other schools? No. But at the same time, I, I think the field house has been needed for a while. I think they tried to bond for it, you know, a handful of years ago. And it just, you know, money ran out. So to me, it's important. You know, is it as important as, you know, what's all under the, the bond? No.
Mr. McLaren.
Yeah, I, I would echo a little bit what Chet said. I mean, obviously it is, it is not the same importance of the, the educational facilities. I think that's why the board took the opportunity to switch the, or to, to divide those things out into, into separate issues or bonds or however you want to describe that. As far as, you know, from a board standpoint, it was, it was a couple of years ago and this, this was brought to our attention by a group of teachers, coaches, staff about the need of a, of an additional gymnasium and additional space. Our weight room is very subpar, in my opinion. And, and so that's where the, that's where this kind of came about. And, and as a board, it's hard when your staff and, and your teachers come with something and, and you just, you know, we'll get to it or whatever. I think we've come to that situation where we've, you know, and, and, you know, I know the 18 and a half million scares everybody out of the, the Save dollars. I think, you know, we've used our financial people, you know, to try and help us drive those discussions and those understandings. You know, I, I will say that there's not a lot of drawings in that facility because, you know, it is up to 18 and a half million. I think I could speak for, I guess I can only speak for myself as a board member, you know, we haven't had a chance to do any, any value engineering, if that's the right word, or try and save any dollars on that facility, what that is. I know now if you look, there's a box out there that has three basketball courts. I don't know that that's ever gonna, you know, will, will it be three basketball courts? I don't think anybody knows because we're not in that situation yet to, to actually design the, the building itself. So, you know, that's why that is, you know, up to 18 and a half million. Hopefully we can save money on that and, and, and move forward. But it's, when we did our bond issue, I think for the outdoor facilities in 2017, I think if that was correct, or anyway, a number of years ago when we did that, you know, it was determined that it was, you know, maybe a, a want and not necessarily a need. And, and here we are, 2025, a number of years later. And, well, we're actually gonna pay off that bond that we passed then. And, and we're still here in a situation where I don't know that you can say that it's still a want and it's definitely a need.
Mr. Williams, same question.
Well, I don't think it's any, any, any surprise that I led a group to get this to a vote. I think that if we're gonna spend that much on an athletic facility, we definitely should be able to vote on it. I've been really cautious about telling people whether or not they should vote or, or not vote on it. Because I think that when you're talking about this, you have to decide for yourself, is this a need? Is this a want for the district? Okay? There can be four, five, or 10, or 20 people who feel like this is a, a absolute need. And there can be the same amount who say that this is an absolute want. Okay? So I think that it needs to come down to the voters. I do think that we need an additional gym for competition. As a coach, I watched that over and over and over again, that we needed, we needed, it would be really, really nice to have that second competition gym that we didn't have to drive to. We have it. It's just at the middle, oops, at the middle school. Sorry. Talk with my hands, guys. It's at the middle school. We have, you know, in Hawkeye 10, we don't have a ton of differences with the amount of gym space that other Hawkeye 10 schools have. We have very much the same as those other Hawkeye 10 schools. And a lot of those schools you may have to drive to to get to that. So I think there's a difference on, on whether or not I see this as a want or a need. As a coach, I see it as a want. I, I see it as a want. I, I think we have a need for a girls wrestling room up at our high school that rivals the same thing as our boys wrestling room. Okay? I think we're gonna have to do some things on the wrestling room that, to improve that room because it's a steel building and it's getting to the end of its life. So I think that there's some things on the wrestling side that are not looked at in the plan because our girls wrestling does not have the same facility as our boys wrestling. And I don't see that in the plan. We can say that we're going to, to look at these things once we pass it. I'm a little skeptical of that as, as a taxpayer, as a teacher, because, you know, I don't necessarily think that that's the right way to do it. I think we need to know. We need to know what you're putting in to this facility. And if, if you're gonna step back a little bit and you're gonna say, hey, we're gonna let some people decide, we better have a pretty big picture, just like we had on the Trojan Bowl. Okay? We had a pretty big picture on the Trojan Bowl. We had a pretty big picture on that bond. Exactly what everything was gonna do and that committee informed us for over a year, over a year, not a couple of months. Okay? So I'm, I'm a little skeptical. So I can't say I'm, I'm for or against it because I don't know all the details of it. And, and I don't want to be over, overly animated with it, but I don't know all the details. I've tried to get the details. I've, I've actually put in an open records request for the details and I haven't gotten the information. So I've tried to really try, I've tried to come out to support it, to be honest with you, because I'm a coach. I'm a, I'm a community member. But I also think that we're recreating the same thing we have in the YMCA. And we gotta be careful about that as a community. We gotta be working together. And right now, I don't think we're working together. And so, you know, I heard one of the candidates talk before, before coming up here, and that was one of his things as city councilor, we're working together as a community to drive what we need to drive. And if we're not working together as a YMCA, if we're trying to recreate the YMCA, I got a problem with that. I got a big problem with that because we as taxpayers have supported that for a long, long time and we need to continue to support that amazing facility, those amazing facility things every day. And we should not be getting into where we're competing with it if we are. I don't know, because I don't have all the information. And I've tried a lot to get it. I'm not saying that's Josh's fault at all, because I haven't asked Josh those questions. I've asked some other people, the board president and, and secretary. So I'm not gonna sit up here and say Josh is a bad guy for, for that, not having that information. Don't, I don't think that at all. I want to make sure people understand that in the public. I don't think anybody on the board's a bad person. I just think that we rushing decisions, you know, we didn't know we were gonna vote on this until we presented the petition back in September. And now we're rushing. And, and I don't like that when we're talking $40 million.
Mr. Zabano.
Yeah. So as a sports guy, obviously, I think the field house would be awesome. I, you know, growing up as an athlete, I, I wanted a field house, you know, I wanted, you know, I looked at what ACGC built for their football boys, the weight room. They have turf in there. You know, they, they did a- You know, they they did a a smaller version of a kind of what has been in the conceptual plans or, you know, talked about here in Atlantic. I, you know, as a sports guy, I'm all for it. As a taxpayer, looking at it from a different perspective, I'm thinking, you know, maybe maybe this is being presented poorly. And I think that I've heard board members speak and say, you know, we did not, they 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 came out and said, we didn't present it to the community as well as we should have. But in the end, they think this is the best step moving forward. I think, you know, my personal opinion, they should have said, hey, let's slow down, present it to the community a little bit better, get a little bit more backing, you know, give a little bit more details, sell it better. I think it's being sold really poorly. And now they have kind of a, you know, now they have weight against them. And, you know, they're kind of fighting an uphill battle on it, I feel. And I I feel like that's something that could have been avoided with communication and just, you know, I I keep using that word transparency, but that's what it is. I'm not saying they lied about anything. I'm just saying that maybe they should have got a little bit more on it, you know, been a little bit more clear and concise on everything. And maybe, you know, maybe this maybe maybe more people would, you know, support it. So I'm not saying I support it. I'm not saying I don't support it because, again, the, you know, what I've been presented isn't good, you know, it's just not good enough for me to say one way or another, like, yeah, hey, I'm all for it. Or no, I'm against it. I just feel like I just needed a little bit more, a little bit more information on it. So if I'm looking at it from an athletic standpoint, and, you know, my my younger self, I would say, yeah, we need it. You know, if I was in high school, I'd be like, oh, yeah, I, we need it right now, you know, tomorrow. You know, but now looking at it through a different lens, I'm like, I think maybe we should slow down, really go through the fine details of this with the cone, you know, fine tooth comb and just get through it. And you know, if it, what I'll say is, if it passes, great. If it don't, we know what we need to work on in the future to, you know, get something like this in Atlantic.
Thank you very much. And then we, I I'll bring this one up here. I know we have a revenue purpose statement which outlines how the Atlantic Community School District may continue to use revenue from the statewide sales tax save for projects such as building improvements, technology, infrastructure, and approved sales tax revenue bond or RPSs, so which would not increase property taxes or create a new tax. And that's according to the district's website. Josh, your thoughts on that?
Well, I I think, Tom, this is just a, I think this is something, and I somebody's probably more knowledgeable about it than I am. But this is a leg, a step that the legislature has made school districts do. I think they just extended that to like 2031, I think, maybe, or 2051. So really, all this statement is, is, I I don't want to say the word rubber stamp, but every school district has to do this in order, this has to pass, yes, or we can't spend those saved dollars which come in in into the school district on anything if we don't. I mean, this is just as generic bare bones of a of a revenue purpose statement a as as possible. So, I mean, this is, this is something that as a board member or a parent or a community, we have to vote yes on this, or we can't, we get that money in it, and we can't use it. So.
Does it expire in 2026? Is that?
No, I think I don't know that. Yeah, I think it does. I don't think it's 26. It's either 26 or 27. And then it's just something that you, yeah, it's one of those that you just have to renew before 2027. Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't know whether to bring that up or not. I mean, I've already put my foot in the water here. So go ahead, Justin.
So this is actually a pretty big deal. It's not as simple as as some people want to make it believe. There's a, you know, if we don't pass this, it does handicap our funding quite a bit. But if, you know, people have to go out to the polls and be educated on this and understand what exactly they're voting for. I mean, I think this is really important for our district. Probably, if we had to rank them in order right now, I think I would be putting the our the the revenue purpose statement first, because there's, if you read that statement, there are a ton of things in there that that statement provides. Technology. And if we don't pass it, it can only go to property tax relief. And that is an important thing for people to understand what they're voting for and why they're voting for it, because technology in our districts are huge. And if we are going to have that technology, if we don't have this revenue purpose statement passed, we're going to be paying for it out of the general fund. And that is going to absolutely destroy our general fund. Okay, so people really need to understand. So if you want a clear answer from me on this one, I will give you a clear answer, Tom. I know I've been a pretty pretty bad politician up here about giving clear answers. But I will say, yes, we need to vote for that because it provides a tremendous amount of support for our kids. It is something that is important, and it's going to really help with the technology and all those things, because we had to pay for that. I want to say our laptops alone are about a million dollars every five or six years for our kids to have those those amenities. So it's it's important, and it's not going to affect your your tax, your your general fund taxes that that are out there.
Mr. Zerbano?
Yeah, so those two guys pretty much summed it up, you know, you know, pretty well. So, I mean, if you're asking for an answer to me, that, you know, it needs passed, you know, you know, we need the technology, we need everything that that purpose statement is going to cover, you know, for, you know, at least until 2027, when we can renew that. So yeah, with that, I would say vote yes on that.
Mr. Manili?
Yeah, same thing. It's a, it's a yes. It's it's important. You know, if anything, you know, please get educated on it and, you know, make the decision that you feel is best. But they pretty much summed it up, so.
Well, let's go back to Mr. Williams here. And thank you, Guy. No, that's really a main issue. We're talking about the the three ballot measures. Let's what's your vision for Atlantic schools, Mr. Williams, the next five to 10 years?
Well, I kind of alluded to something earlier, Tom, where I'm talking about, we're talking a lot about our second, our second part of our job. We need to kind of get really serious about the first part of our job as board members. And if if we become board members, and that is the academics of our school district. That is a big part of what I've done for years is making sure that our academics are at the top. Okay, we're not there. Okay, a lot of school districts aren't. We're not there. I've looked at our data. We got to get there. In the next five, four years, that will be a focus. That needs to be a focus of every single board meeting. Okay, right now, because of where we're at. Okay, we have great, 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 great teachers. And I'm going to keep saying that. We have a great teachers at the elementary level. We have great teachers that are absolutely doing amazing things for our kids. I've watching it happen right now with Ms. Terrell and my son and his reading. It it's amazing. Okay, but we need to get focused on it. When Dr. Amstein was here, we were focused. We were focused from a board perspective. We were focused from an administrative perspective, and we were focused from a teaching perspective. We need to get back to that. Okay, we need to get back to that, and we need to, we need to hit it hard because that's the meat and potatoes of our district. Okay? We also, you know, we're talking a lot about activities. We got to also be making sure we're taking care of the fine arts. Okay, our fine arts have had some unexpected hiccups, and that's, to me, that's not a board issue. But it's something that the board needs to put pressure on now and say, we got to get our academic, we got to get our fine art situation back to where it needs to be. And we need to make sure that we're investing equally in those things. We can't, you know, $18.5 million into a fieldhouse is not investing equally into the fine arts. Okay, so we've got to look at some things there and make sure that we are investing equally into those things. And transparency. We've went from, and I'll applaud Josh with this, with Dr. Amstein and and the transition even to Mr. Barber, we were really transparent. We started posting our meeting packets. We had all that stuff online. And all of a sudden, we stepped back a little bit for this. Sorry, talk with my hands. I'm sorry. We got to get back to that transparency where we're getting all that information. I have to request it. I I have to, I don't even get the agenda. It's not even online. Okay, so we got to get back to that. Where where Josh and and Christie and all those board members were focused on that about four, four, five years ago. We've lost that in the last year. I don't know why. But we've got to get that information. It's public information. We got to remember that. All this stuff is public. And we need to get that out there. And it's not out there. It's not being provided to our constituents. I don't know why, but it's got to get fixed. That's that's an important thing for us as as people. So those are, those are my three things. I want to be top five in in academics in the Hawkeye 10. I want to really invest in our fine arts and our activities, and I want to fix our transparency issue that has all of a sudden happened.
Yeah, kind of piggybacking on Justin's first topic there, academics. I want to see our our academics come up, you know. Where the state's coming out right now with our state standardized test scores, you know, the bottom 40% or bottom 50%. To me, that's not good enough. I've I've always held myself to a higher expectation. I want to see those numbers up. I know there's a case to be made that maybe those standardized test scores aren't, you know, as important as they used to be, but that's what the state puts out, and there's a lot of funding coming from the state with those scores. So those scores got to come up regardless of we like it or not. You know, you know, my second point, you know, I I want to, I want to make sure our staff's happy. You know, retention, I I believe we we have to do something to make teachers want to stay here. We got to do something to make teachers want to come here. You know, whether whether that is discussed later, you know, when, once we get on or, you know, before, and we, you know, kind of spearhead something. And that's, you know, any, any four of us, you know, I believe that has to be talked about as well. You know, teachers should want to come to work every day. They should want to put their best foot forward and give us, give our children a good education instead of, you know, just coming to work, doing, you know, going through the motions, you know. And I'm not saying that our teachers are doing that. They're, you know, they're, you know, they're doing the best they can with what they got, but we got to be willing to support them as much as possible so they can support our kids. We got to put our teachers and our educators and all of our staff in a good situation so they want to keep going and they want to thrive. And they want to keep progressing. And, you know, transparency and accountability. Like, I I've I've been, I've had the pleasure of growing up and watching, oh, you know, a lot of these people on the board and the administration kind of step into those roles and take over. And, you know, they were, you know, they were strong and they're confident and, you know, they were transparent. They held themselves accountable, and I don't know where it went. I'm not throwing shots at anybody. I think it's a collective thing, you know, it, obviously, I think it's more of a behind the scenes issue. You know, I I, like Justin said, I shouldn't have to ask for public public information. It should just be posted. I, you know, I should be able to go on our school website, see what the agenda is going to be. You know, as a parent, I think we should all get an email saying, hey, this is going to be on the, this is the agenda for tonight. You know, they send out, they send me an email or a text message every other day about something, you know, what in there. It's all good stuff, don't get me wrong, but that's something like, hey, you know, tune in tonight. If you want to know what's going on, tune in tonight. This is what we're going to talk about. If you think, if you think it's important, listen. And, you know, that, so that's kind of where I'm, you know, I'm heading. And, you know, that's, I think that's a big topic, you know, right now in the community. We want a little bit more transparency. We want the community outreach. We want the community to be able to have a say.
Mr. Manili?
Yes, so I think the biggest thing is we want success. You know, we want success for our students. We want success for our teachers. You know, we want success for the district. You know, pretty new to everything and, you know, all the information that's going on, that that will be coming up. But, you know, I think the biggest thing that's that's going to help advocate for that success is going to be, you know, some clarity, a lot of communication, and, you know, getting the community involved with everything. You know, I think that those three points will, you know, help the school succeed, which helps the district succeed, and, you know, shows pride and, you know, the the community. So that's what I got there.
Mr. McLaren?
Can you repeat the question, Tom? I think it's vision.
What's your vision now for the next
Yes, I I think a vision has to be to continue you know, doing what's best for our kids. We have a lot of things going on, and everybody's alluded to it. You know, we have a lot of things going on that are good, and and we just have to keep providing those those opportunities, those experiences, whether that's new things or or beefing up some of the current programs we have or or classes we have or offerings we have. You know, things like the aviation program that we have, you know, if there's other things like that out there, you know, to to enhance our our kids' education. Because at the end, we're all, all four of us are here in the best interest of our kids. And 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 as like Chet said, it 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 all goes down to the success of our community is is a lot of it based upon our schools. And and I think our vision has to be to continue to move forward in the best interest of of our our students.
Thank you very much, Mr. McLaren. Mr. Zerbano, we'll start with you here. What qualities to make for an effective school board member?
Oh, there's a lot of qualities that go into that, you know. I I believe being, you know, transparency, accountability, responsibility. All those stuff, you know, you know, you can go on and on. The list goes on and on. I think that, you know, the school put up those those pillars of the true Trojan traits, you know, you walk in the school and they're all right there. You know, that I believe if if you follow those, and Josh, you might be able to tell me what's on those, you know, accountability, yeah, you know, those are just any, anything you can think of that, you know, is a, you know, like accountability. Be accountable. If, you know, if you as a board member made a mistake, own up to it, you know, be responsible. Show up on time, be attentive, you know, do your homework on the topics that discuss, you know, of discussion. You know, show up prepared. You know, and keeping all stakeholders in mind. You get, you know, you got to keep the students in mind, you got to keep the staff in mind, you got to keep the taxpayers in mind. And, you know, you got to keep, you got to keep everything and, you know, in in line. And you got to head in the right direction for everybody as far as the community goes. And, you know, there's a lot of traits that go into it, but, you know, you just stay true to yourself and, you know, run behind good morals, and you'll be all right.
Mr. Manili, again, what qualities do you think make for an effective school board member?
I think some of the qualities are, I have a small business. You know, I can run a budget. I can make hard decisions. I can communicate. Those are, you know, qualities that I think, you know, all the board members have and and that, you know, will will be useful. I would also say that I am willing and eager to learn and learn more about, you know, how the, you know, school board processes, how these funds can be used and, you know, how they can't be used. And, yeah.
Mr. McLaren?
Yeah, I I think, you know, like you said, a lot of it is just the portrait of a graduate and some of those that, you know, that we have and some of those traits that Mr. Zerbano talked about, you know, it's a lot of those things all all into one. And it is, you know, the, you know, it is fairly reactive as a board member, you know, you from community members, from staff, stuff like that. You know, and and you do have to have communications, and sometimes you do have to make tough decisions and hard decisions, unpopular decisions. But that's just, you know, that just kind of kind of goes with it.
Mr. Williams, as far as what qualities you think make for an effective school board member?
Well, I think, one, you got to be academically focused. I think that's the biggest thing that you've got to be as a board member. You got to be academically focused. You've got to be fiscally responsible. You've got to be a leader. I sit on a board that West Central Community Action, we have multi-million dollars that we manage. And, you know, you you can't be a micromanager, but you've got to be somebody that is approachable to the public, approachable to your, by your, you have to be approachable. You've got to have staff that can approach. You got to have public that can approach you. You've you've got to be able to communicate clearly what our ideas and what we're doing and what we're moving forward with. So I think, you know, overall, just being a really good leader is what makes a a good school board member, being knowledgeable. You know, everybody touched on something that's really important, whether we're learning it, whether we know it. We've got to be an approachable, good leader.
Mr. McLaren, what what do you see as the biggest challenges facing our school district? Maybe that's somewhat like the vision, but, yeah.
I think one of the, one of the, I think there's two challenges. First is is a a lack of of available teachers, staff, that that's, you know, I hate to say everybody's got that problem. But I think that's true, you know. It's my understanding, you know, there's not as many young, young college people entering the profession. And and that makes it tough. You know, as far as that, and and we have to try and do what we can to fill those positions and 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 make make our job in Atlantic something that somebody wants, you know, to come to, because that all those other things trickle down from that, you know, we have to have something you know, to attract those people to Atlantic and 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 get them here and and keep them here. I I think the other thing, one of the other challenges, I think, is I I don't want to necessarily necessarily say mental health, but I don't want to take away from that. What what I mean by that is the we we have these kids from just, let's just say, eight to three for easy conversation, you know, during the, you know, seven hours a day. A challenge that our educators have is, and I see it in my profession at night, you know, is there's so many variables that go into what these kids are having to do, what they're experiencing after, or outside of school hours, whether it's, you know, something as simple as not getting breakfast or you know, mom and dad, there's so many dynamics that go into it, and then our teachers are having to deal with it for that seven, whatever, seven hours during the day, and try, and then we're trying to get this kid to test well and and all that. So it's all, it's more than just the eight to three school day. And that's, you know, that's, I I applaud our teachers and our staff, all, everybody that's inside those buildings every day because they got a heck of a job to do. And 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 some of it is those those variable, variables that are absolutely outside of outside of our control. Now, with that, you know, we've, we've hired a, a school resource officer. We have a behavioral interventionist. I can't think of the, the actual, the note, then, what are you, what am I trying to say? The letters to it. But that person, you know, that assists the SRO with those type of things, because we have so many outside. So, I think moving forward, our biggest challenge is, is going to be getting, getting teachers here, and, and also just trying to, I don't know that the world's going to change a lot, you know, with those outside things that we have to deal with inside our school buildings.
Thank you very much. Mr. Williams, what do you think the biggest challenges are?
Well, I'm going to start with our, with the two things I said that are, that are the jobs of the board, academics. I think Josh hit, hit the nail on the head with a lot of things there. Recruitment and retention of staff is, is a critical, a critical thing in all school districts now, because there's times that schools do not have teachers in front of kids. And, and that's scary. So, from a board perspective, we need to, we need to get ahead of that. And we need to, we need to make sure that we have policies and procedures in place that are going to attract and retain those people. I, I haven't seen a lot of that in terms of our board policies or anything like that, but that is, that is a big challenge. And, and so, from a board perspective, we need to make sure that we're attacking that, and we're attacking that early. If we're hiring in, in March, April, and May, which we used to do, we're behind. Okay? So, we need to be thinking about this early, and we need to get staff in front of kids, and we need to make sure we're fully staffed in every area, mental health area, busing, whatever, whatever that may be. That's a huge, huge thing for us that we're going to have to do from a board perspective, and we're going to have to get better at it. We're going to have to get our hands dirty. We can't sit back and say, we're not a part of that. Well, we, we definitely are as a board. We've got to put the policies and procedures in place. And another challenge is, is fiscally. We're going to keep getting, the government is going to keep shrinking what schools get, and we have to be creative. We cannot tie our finances up till 2051 with bonds, because we cannot predict that far ahead of time. Okay? That's what scares me in all this. Okay? That's what scares me in everything that we're doing here with this bond stuff. And we talked about it. We're going to tie finances up for a long time. How can we predict what our state government's going to do? What our federal government's going to do for that amount of time? That is just being irresponsible.
Mr. Zorbano.
Yeah, so, biggest challenges going forward, kind of piggybacking on what Josh and Justin said, you know. Academically, you know, we got to find a way to retain our teachers and, you know, make us, you know, make us look like a good community. Come teach in. You know, a good school district, come teach in. We got to, we got to draw those teachers in. And, you know, how, it's, it's, it's an issue in every school district. How are we going to do it? That's something that needs talked about. That's something that we got to, you know, we got to, we got to get going on now. You know, as far as Josh touched on that, I, I feel like the mental health or, you know, the, the issues going on outside of school, that's huge too, you know. What can we do as a district to help these kids that maybe don't get breakfast every morning, or, you know, they were up all night, you know, for whatever reason it may be. And they, they got to, you know, they got to sleep at, you know, past midnight. They come in, you know, and they don't test well the next day, you know. We, like Josh said, we can't control that. We got to control what we can control, but how can we help those kids? How can we put those kids in a better situation in school and get them the best education while they're there and kind of lean into that? So, you know, and the fiscal responsibility part, I feel like there is a little bit more room for some open communication about that, and, you know, just saying, hey, you know, what do we need? What do we, what does it want? What, you know, what, let's get into the meat and potatoes of it and really get that fine details before we do make those big decisions that are going to impact us, you know, for 10, 15, how many ever years it is down the road. I feel like those are our three main, you know, biggest challenges moving forward.
Thank you very much. Mr. Meneely, what do you think are the biggest challenges facing our school district?
Yeah, you know, I think the biggest thing is going to be just, you know, how can we increase morale? You know, if you have students that want to be there, if you have teachers that want to be there, and staff that wants to be there, you know, you're going to, you're going to be successful. And I think that's going to be important. You know, I think that pretty much sums up, you know, I think the, the biggest challenge, you know. Teachers can be, teachers have a tough job, and, you know, it's hard. And, but if, if everyone wants to be there, if the students, you know, I think we're just, it's a win-win all around, so.
Mr. McLaren, I think, we, yeah, we talked to you about that, so we're going to, yeah, thank you very much. So, we're going to wrap up, guys. Great stuff. And final comments you want to make here before we let you guys go. We'll start with Mr. Williams.
Well, first off, once again, thanks for hosting this. I think it's really important for our public to, to understand who their candidates are and understand what we're about. And so, I, I do appreciate that. I appreciate all the media that we've gotten. You know, I've, I've served in a lot of capacities for the district. I'm somebody who has a lot of experience. I'm somebody who cares about the district and wants to make sure that the district is going in the direction, in a, in a very responsible direction for our future. Okay? I want everybody to understand that. I'm not against the district. And anybody who knows me, who knows me as a coach, who knows me as a teacher, I dedicated a ton of time. I wasn't a 7:30 to 3:30 teacher. I was a 7:30 to 11:30 teacher. Okay? I ded, I dedicated a ton of time to the Atlantic Community School District. I love the district. It gave me a lot. It changed my, it changed my whole outcome as a person. Okay? I went from being a poor kid with very little resources to going through high school as an alternative school kid, to working myself through college. Okay? So, I wasn't handed anything in life in any way, shape, or form. The Atlantic Community School District gave me those opportunities by not giving up on me when I was an alternative school kid. That teacher made an impact on me. Making sure that our school district stays with that type of vision is really important to me. We've lost it in some ways with, with the way that we're looking to, you know, build things that maybe 18.5 million dollars could be going to academics versus those other pieces. Okay? So, I want to make sure we don't lose that. Okay? I'm not saying we've lost it completely. I'm just saying, there's times that we're not focused on that, and I want to make sure we're focused on being that outstanding district that helped me. Okay? So, I just want people to know, I'm not against the district. I'm, I'm doing this because I want to make sure, and make a huge impact on the district for the future, and make sure that all kids, all kids get a quality education, and that we are focused on all kids. And that's what we need to continue. As a board member, I'm going to fight for that. I'm going to fight for that every day, and if it doesn't make sense to me, I'm going to vote no on it. Okay? I think too many times at the board level, we have too many 5-0 votes. We need more discussion. We need more people talking about things. And we need to make sure that we're doing what's right for all kids.
Mr. Zorbano, final thoughts?
Yeah, my final thoughts is, you know, thanks for, thanks for having this. You know, if people want to get me, you know, get to know me as a candidate, I guess my final little, you know, talking point here is if you guys ever see me with a silver spoon, it's because I earned it. I was not born with one in hand. And I've, I've, I've had to work for everything I've had, and I'll say the Atlantic Community School District kind of put me in a great position to get, you know, to, to get me where I am at, at in my life. I got a lot of people up there and walking, you know, teaching and educating and walking the halls every day that I care a lot about, because they put a lot of time and effort into me as a, as a young man. And I'm in a position now where I want to help them, you know. I, I see them struggling a little bit, and, you know, from a staff perspective, per se, and I want to give back to them the way they, you know, they gave back to me. And also, you know, with my kids and all my nieces, nephews, and my cousins in the school district, it's a great way to, you know, make sure that I'm, I'm giving back to them as well, the same way, you know, give them, you know, those people and help, you know, help the people that helped me help them, you know, if that makes sense. So, that's, you know, that's where I'm at with, you know, just running, and I, that, you know, I just want to help.
Final thoughts, Mr. Meneely?
Yeah. Love Atlantic. Atlantic's given me a lot. School district's given me a lot. Want to give back. That's why I'm running. You know, I think everyone's brought up a lot of good points. You know, if, you know, questions or concerns, you know, if you want to know more of my viewpoint, you know, please feel free to reach out. But, you know, I think, you know, education is important, you know, morale's important, and, you know, coming together as a community, having good communication, having clarity, having pride, you know, in, in what we have here, because we've got a lot of big things going on. And it's, it's neat to see, you know. That's why I moved back. That's why my wife moved back, and that's why we decided to start our family here. So, you know, appreciate everyone that's, you know, been there throughout, you know, my whole time here. And, you know, please, you know, go and vote, because it's, it's important. So, thank you, guys.
Very much, Mr. Meneely. Seeking reelection, talk about that, Mr. McLaren.
Yeah, I, once again, I just thank you guys again for, for doing this. I would just say, you know, a, a final thought is, is as you, as you get older, you, you know, I think about my time when I was at Atlantic and, and the opportunities that I have or had, and, and obviously chose to move back here with, to start my family. And, and now I kind of switched gears a little bit, and I think that's valuable as a board member to, and now I've kind of switched gears into my own children, you know, and, and as they get older, it's a, you know, I hope they, don't forget about what, what Atlantic got them and, and where they, you know, the things they learned. You know, there's success stories all the time. You know, these guys all were from here and came here. You know, that's, that's one of the rewarding parts for me as a board member, is to see somebody that was here, is a graduate of here, and they come back, or they, they get married and they bring their spouse back with them, or they start a business, or they, you know, come back to coach or teach or something like that. That's, that's why I, I'm in this, because I think if, if those things happen, then I think we've done what we can do on the, on the day-to-day basis. And, and so, we, we have a lot of great things going on, and, and we just, we got to just put our nose down and keep them going.
Guys, thank you very much, Mr. Justin Williams, Mr. Jordan Zorbano, Mr. Chet Meneely, Mr. Josh McLaren. Joining us here are four school board candidates running for two seats on the school board. Guys, thank you. Great job. We appreciate you guys. And thank you, folks, for listening and for watching on our live stream here tonight on westerniowtoday.com and KS 95.7 FM and YouTube. This will be on YouTube as well, if you want to go back and, and watch us again. Thanks for joining us. Have a great rest of the evening.